I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of February 20th, 2020, to order. Would the clerk please take the role?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojack?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary, would you like to start us off?
Yes, Mayor Jackson, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, stop by the Glendale Lakes Golf Club on Friday, February 28th, and Friday, April 10th for a meal you will never forget. The Glendale Lakes Golf Club will be featuring their fish fry for two nights only, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Try some great food at a great price. Enjoy all-you-can-eat fish, soup, and salad bar, or order appetizers and other items off of our menu. Call (630) 260-0095 to make a reservation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Trustee Pojack?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during snowfall. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village streets for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. And there's no parking allowed on any village streets for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding the winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Maritato?
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
As a reminder to residents, please do not shovel, snowblow, or plow any snow onto village streets. This would ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow for safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the police department, non-emergency number at[196.84][196.84](630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
With the spring season right around the corner, the Village of Glendale Heights would like to remind residents that many projects in and around the house may require a permit. Common projects needing a permit include work on decks, sheds, patios, re-siding of your house, and re-roofing. We would also like to remind you to not pay your contractor until they contact Community Development to ensure that all work is up to code. If you are not sure if your project requires a permit, or if you need to apply for one, please contact the Community Development Department at (630) 260-6030. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Join us Saturday, March 7th, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon for coffee with the mayor and village board. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. The Village of Glendale Heights would like to let the residents know that January water meter reads will have 32 days in them. This may cause your January bill to be slightly higher than usual, but your February bill will have less days, therefore could be slightly lower. Could be slightly lower. If you have any questions, please contact the Water Billing Division at (630) 260-6010.
Thank you, Mike. Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Registration opens March 1st for the annual Glendale Lakes Golf Club Spring Fling. This yearly event will be Saturday, April 18th, and Sunday, April 19th. This four-person scramble is limited to 36 teams per day. The cost to play in the event is $360 per team. Golfers will receive 18 holes of golf with a cart, breakfast, lunch, dinner, drink ticket, raffle ticket, and a tee prize. For more information, please contact Glendale Lakes Golf Club at (630) 260-0018. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Daylight savings time begins on Sunday, March 8th, at 2:00 a.m. Please remember to turn your clocks forward one hour. Also, during this time, please remember to change the batteries in all your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors when you change your clocks. The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Parks, Recreation and Facilities Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many more. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glendaleheights.org, or contact Human Resources at (630) Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. This one goes to...
I'll take it. I'm here.
Bill has it.
Goes to Bill.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Bill.
For trustees. Village undertook a water meter replacement project last November. 9,000 meters residential commercial to be involved in the project. Here tonight to give us an update from Water Resources Incorporated is Mike Padon.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. Yes, thank you, Bill. Again, I'm Mike Padon. I'm the Vice President of Water Resources. Was here during the summertime to meet with all of you and entertain a few questions as the project was approved and before we started the fieldwork. With me tonight, I have a couple other coworkers. My brother Brett, he is a licensed plumber and is the head of our Service Division with Water Services Company. So all the field installation staff reports to him. And then next to him, we have Anthony Gattuso. He's the Operations Manager with Water Resources, and we form kind of the core of our project management team. We were asked to provide a brief snapshot of the project to date for all of you tonight. So I've got about half a dozen slides here that we can go through and just kind of give you a high-level view and an opportunity at the end to ask any questions that you might feel that you wish to ask. So, starting, I'll move over. We'll start here with this first slide. We'll give you a brief agenda, what we wish to discuss in our presentation. We want to take a little look at where we're at to date on the project in terms of installations and completion of those installations, as well as where we're at with scheduled appointments, the valve replacements, what we've done to date on that. I know that was a hot topic back during the summertime when we were talking about offering that as a service, a value-added service for your residents. And then also just give you a little bit of general feedback on what we're seeing so far with the installations. So, moving on to the first slide where we're discussing the installations completed so far, again, the village has around 8,900 service accounts. Through about the end of the day yesterday, we've completed just under 2,300 installations throughout the village. That puts us at over 25% complete, so we're about a quarter of the way through. In terms of the large commercial and industrial meters, that would be the meters that are sizes two-inch and above. We're attacking that group separately with another group of installers, and we're almost fully complete. We've got a couple of installations that we have to finish there. That was a group that the staff really wanted us to pay special attention to and attack as those are some of your high-volume and high-revenue users. We also have a map that we wanted to show, and I think David's going to pull that up now. This is something that we've been kind of updating on a monthly basis as we go along with the project, and I believe the village is posting this on your website for the benefit of your residents if they wish to see kind of where we're working and what we've completed so far. So, it's sort of like a gas gauge, if you will, showing what we've completed. We can zoom in on the maps to pull up individual accounts, but that just kind of gives you an idea of the areas that we're working in, and all of those bubbles represent completed accounts.
Wow. Did it good.
Okay, thank you, David. Move on to the next slide. This slide will give us just a little update on where we're at with appointments and what is scheduled in terms of our appointment backlog. Right now, we have about 575 total appointments that are scheduled, and interestingly, when we kind of took a look to see how your residents and your water customers are choosing to schedule with us, it looks like it's about a three-to-one ratio. We've got 72% of the total scheduled appointments on the project so far have been made by the residents responding to that letter asking them to call their office and calling that 1-800 number and talking to our staff in our call center, and the other 28% are using the option to schedule with our online appointment scheduling program. When we move on to the next slide, we'll give you a look at where we're at with the valves that have been replaced so far. As you can see, there really haven't been that many considering that we've completed almost 2,300 installations throughout the village. So we have had a grand total of one dozen residents that have hired our staff to perform residential valve installations. Two of the residents out of those 12 had us replace both of their valves, so that's why there's 14 valves that have been replaced in a total of 12 homes. In terms of the installations, just in general, the installation time is typically running between 30 to 40 minutes on the average. Some of the installations are a little quicker, some of them take a little bit more time, but overall, that's about what our average time is. The project is running well, smoothly. We're working within the time constraints and the budgetary constraints of what the project plan was for, and I have to say that the level of cooperation and communication that we've had with the village staff has been excellent. The staff is very professional, very thorough, and is always ready and able to help us and assist wherever possible so that we can better serve you and your residents and your customers. I think we're at the last slide already, so we would like to open it up. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to entertain and answer them.
Trustee Maritato?
The letters that you're sending out, you send them out to everybody already, or you got sections, or you're sending the letters out?
Yes, we're sending them to different sections based on the meter reading and billing schedule. So they've been sent out to, I think, over about 3,000 accounts so far, so maybe about a third of the village has received a letter.
Okay. Thank you. My second question is, Mike, how do we figure these payouts?
I'm sorry?
The payouts. How do we figure the payouts when we pay them?
Oh, we're paying Water Resources?
Right. I mean, we only did 2,900.
Right, and we just recently paid one. I'm going to look to Bill to talk about that.
There's one right yet. There's one on here now.
Yeah.
Michael speaks better than I can, but it's based upon the contract specifications, which are based upon the installs that are completed. So they do an install, and that's one unit times the price that we agreed to in the contract.
Right, yeah. We submit an invoice on a monthly basis, Trustee Maritato, so I think the one that you guys are talking about tonight is the third installation invoice so far. So basically, work that we would perform during the month of February that we're installing this month, there would be an invoice and all the associated paperwork that goes with that that would be forwarded on to the village staff in early April, and it's all at unit pricing.
So at the rate you're going, when you think you're going to be done?
We are intending to finish the project substantially by August, September, somewhere in that range.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Pojack?
Have you had any major issues with any of the residents in the village since you started this project?
No, I wouldn't say anything major. I mean, just a couple of minor things.
Any complaints?
No. Do you think so? I'm going to call Brett up because he talks to the residents a little more than I do.
All right.
Really, we haven't had any big issues, really. Some, I think probably the largest thing is we had a dog bite.
Oh.
That was one of our installers. But not too many issues as far as dirty or leaving behind messes or anything like that.
So far, everybody's pretty satisfied with your installation, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
They have to come in the house.
Any issues having enough work room, work area?
There's been a couple times. Most of the time, you know, we specify in the letter that there needs to be enough room, adequate room, and most of the time, there isn't, but providing that the resident doesn't mind us moving some of the items, our guys usually take care of that.
All right, thank you.
Trustee Schmidt?
This isn't a question, it's a comment, that we had our meter replaced about a month ago. The installer was very friendly, professional, on time, efficient, and I couldn't have asked her a better install, so thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you. That's very nice to hear. Very comforting.
Trustee Light?
I was going to kind of say the same basic thing. I had to reschedule because there was a technical problem, was unable to get the pipe apart, but he didn't want to leave us without water. He wanted to make sure we were taken care of. He was excellent, and then they rescheduled as quickly as possible, and absolutely no problems done whatsoever. In and out, like you said, half hour. You know, kind of shocked, I thought I'd come home to a mess, but everything was cleaned up and everything was done, like nobody was even there, so thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate the feedback.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
David, I think this is for you, right?
Mayor and Board, as you know, Nicole Lewis, she couldn't be here tonight, but she's really taking on a big role in trying to help spread the word about the upcoming U.S. Census. So we have a representative from the U.S. Census who can come and speak about exactly what the census entails and some of the initiatives that are going on in the community.
Good evening. My name is Sue Immer, partnership specialist from United States Census Bureau at the Chicago Regional Census Center. First and foremost, it is my honor to be here today on behalf of the U.S. Census Bureau and our Regional Director, Madeline A. Sanders, to promote the message of 2020 Decennial Census at this board meeting, and I would like to express my gratitude to the mayor of Glendale Heights and/or the board members for having me here. Okay, so, today I'm here to talk about, you know, David was, you know, first let me set the timer. I have 20 minutes to make sure, out of respect of your time. So some of you might have heard this presentation, so please bear with me, especially the mayor, so I just want to cover the basics. Okay, so the program I'll be talking about today is called the Community Partnership Engagement Program, shortly CPAP, and we cover eight states, basically the Midwest region, to count everyone only once in the right place. Her name is Madeline A. Sanders. She's our Regional Director, and as always, our goal has been count everyone only once in the right place, and the eight states are listed at the bottom of the slide, Arkansas, Illinois, Indiana, Iowa, Michigan, Minnesota, Missouri, and Wisconsin. This is her contact information. If you have any questions or comments, you know, please feel free to reach out to her. She has open-door policy. And this program has two major components. One is a State Complete Count Commission, and the other is a Complete Count Committee. And we should have, I think, the picture of a government principal, but anyway. He is the governor of Missouri, and he's signing the executive order to officiate the formation of a State Complete Count Commission to start the Census outage campaign in his state. So as we all know, census participation is our civic duty and legal mandate according to the U.S. Constitution. It includes all 50 states, Puerto Rico, Washington D.C., and island areas. It includes people of all ages, races, ethnic groups, citizens and non-citizens. And the Census data is used to determine the number of seats in the House of Representatives and also to redraw congressional boundaries for the next 10 years. And also, the federal government is to distribute more than $675 billion for each state and And these are some of the challenging factors we have to navigate towards the complete, accurate, timely count of everyone. So for example, there's information explosion, this increased fear and distrust in government, and the overall response rates are declining, and the American population is very diverse, and also our living environment is becoming more informal and complex, and also due to increased use of mobile technology, our population is very transient, and also there's a large reduction in the census budget. So we need to keep these factors in mind as we go about census outage operation. This slide shows how 2020 Census will unfold. I want to start at the left bottom corner. So from last August through last October, we completed address canvassing operations. We sent out the address listers to all different areas to verify every single addresses to list the nation's addresses. And move to the right, motivate people to respond. So the U.S. Census Bureau is conducting a nationwide communication and partnership campaign using TV, radio, newspapers, internet, et cetera, and we are working hard to build partnerships with the many trusted voices in different communities and areas. And move to the right, count the population. So there are four options for people to self-respond, so I want to give you key two dates. So self-response will begin on March 12th, so everyone, so every single, actually 95% of householders will receive the invitation letter starting on March 12th, and they have two options, either to go online or to fill out the census form. And if they need other language options, they can call, they can call the number or go online, fill out the form. And whoever did not respond by phone or mail or online, there will be somebody coming to their door to conduct the interview, to collect the data, which has been very costly, so U.S. Census Bureau will take any step to minimize the need to send out the people. And the actual form has nine questions with the basic demographic information, and also there will be 13, actually 12 different language options that will be available. And also, there will be 59 language assistance guidelines that will be available online, only instruction, not the actual questions. Okay. Then move to a non-response follow-up, shortly NERF, and this is for people who did not respond any of those three options, there will be somebody coming to their door. Lastly, the Census data will be delivered to the prisons by December 31st, 2020, and also it will be delivered to the states by April 1st, 2021. There has been a lot of concerns about the cybersecurity, so the U.S. Census Bureau will take any steps mitigate to protect people's private information. So, as of yet, the U.S. Census Bureau reached our recruiting goal, but still we are recruiting and hiring a lot of positions for, actually, there are three positions people can apply to be census takers, recruiter, and clerks. And Chicago Regional Census Center is trying to fill these positions, management, clerical, recruiting, information tech, space leasing, administrative, and partnership. And the U.S., Chicago RCC has opened up 32 area census offices indicated with the blue dots in eight states. And so those are the positions we are recruiting to hire, and these ACOs are responsible for conducting local census implementation. And there are a few ways, actually two ways, you can go about applying for these positions. So one is the 2020census.gov/jobs, and also you can call the number to fill out your So depending on, you know, zip codes, you know, people can make up to $29, $20.50 per hour. It's very flexible. Anybody 18 and over, you don't have to be a U.S. citizen. If you have any, if you have a social, valid social security numbers with a valid email addresses, you know, you can apply. And there are some assessment questions you have to go through and the background check. So we are trying to recruit locally because, you know, we need the people who can really go out to their own community to represent their community, you know, who knows the language, culture, you know, who have connections, so they can, you know, increase the self-response participation in their own areas. Okay, so this is key timelines. So we are, in February of 2020, we started group quarters operations, meaning any institutional living arrangement for people who are not related, they live or stay together, such as nursing homes, military barracks, prisons, group treatment homes, you know, cabins, et cetera. So we have a separate count operation, and we are reaching out to those facilities to determine how they want to be counted, including college dormitories. And in the middle of March, self-response will begin, and from March through July, we will begin a field enumeration in selected areas. April 1st is 2020 Census Day, and from late April through August, we'll conduct non-response follow-up, and I gave you the delivery dates. What's the goal of this partnership program? We want to work with the local partners, like the Village of Glendale Heights, to engage, educate, and encourage participation in the 2020 Census by those who are less likely to self-respond and who are known to be hard to count. And that's the list of some entities we have built a partnership with. State Complete Count Commissions, I mentioned four. And thank you very much for, you know, forming the Complete Count Committee, and, you know, I heard a lot of great activities, you know, to promote the census messages in your village, so, you know, I really appreciate the effort. So, and also, Complete Count Committees can be formed by community leaders in addition to government leaders, so, let's see. So for government side, it is formed by proclamation or ordinance, and the members are appointed by the highest elected official, and they are charged are appointed by the highest elected official, and they are charged with the local census outreach effort, and they provide the leadership and support for participation. The purpose of a Complete Count Committee is to assist the Census Bureau to meet the goal of a timely, accurate, and cost-effective census count, provides trusted voices as census ambassadors. The objectives of a Complete Count Committee is to monitor census participation in your area and to target outreach effort in low response rate areas. I think those are called the hard-to-reach, hard-to-survey population. And, uh, provide the resources to support Complete Count goals, and is to collaborate with the local partnership specialist and, um, regional director for, uh, training and support. So, uh, this shows, you know, how the Complete Count Committee can be structured and organized. Each individual, uh, sitting at the table, you know, just like this setting, represents, you know, different, um, uh, cross-section of your community members, such as education, media, social services, regional associations, faith-based universities, business offices, professional associations, library, nonprofit community organizations, health department, clinics, and hospitals, and the government representatives. And the, the role of a partnership specialist, uh, is, um, uh, provide the support and, uh, resources to your Complete Count Committee. So what are the separate topics for the Complete Count Committees? How to reach specific audiences and how to help recruit for census jobs. And utilize media, social media, and the website to really spread the importance of the 2020 Census. So we've been working individually with the many different organizations, cultural programs, embassies, council agenda, and faith-based institutions. This, uh, list shows the, the, some of the major cities who have formed the Complete Count Committees. I wanna highlight this, uh, slide. So when we say hard to count, hard to survey, people, who are they? So they are children under five. So in 2010 Census, we lost, um, 100 million children in past census. So we really wanna make sure, you know, we count zero to five, uh, those little ones: college students, farm workers, homeless, immigrants, language constrained, millennials, minorities, people in poverty, people with disabilities, refugees, renters, snowbirds, senior citizens, veterans, and young adults. So we wanna really focus our resources and efforts to reach out to these folks to make sure they get counted. As far as local, uh, local update of census addresses, uh, there was, uh, there was concluded in, um, um, 2018. And any new development or new addresses, uh, new housing that came after, needs to report to the Census Bureau so we can update our nation's address list before the census. And this shows the key, uh, Complete Count Committee, uh, communication stages. So we are in educate phase, uh, February 2020, and we are moving on to encouraging phase from March through May 2020. Reminding phase starts in May through July 2020. And the Census Bureau will conduct a thank you campaign to, um, express our gratitude, you know, to all our partners, complete this mission. So just a couple more slides, and it's a lot of information. So, um, there are, you know, many census data tools available for your research, you know, when you develop, uh, um, strategy to reach out to those, uh, hard-to-count, uh, population. But I first wanna highlight, uh, the two. So one of them is a 2010 male participation rate map, shortly NPR. And the second one is a low response score map, shortly Rome. So this is an internet-based interactive map, and that's the link at the bottom. You can select any area, and you can look at it by ma- many different, uh, levels: place, state, um, county, um, census tract, you know, et cetera. And if you look at the table in 2010 census participation rates, Illinois, um, the 76% of our entire household participated ranked at 11. And the Wisconsin, 82% of our entire population participated and ranked at number one. The entire nation, 74% it was the participation. So if you zoom in, uh, that's what it looks like. You can see the trend between 2000 and 2010. You can see the increase and decrease in our participation. This tool is called the Response Outreach Area Map, shortly Rome. And, uh, they pulled the data, uh, from the American Community Survey from last five-year estimate. And they come up with this low response scores. The higher the RRS score is a low, low participation, and the lower RRS score is a higher participation. So it works, you know, opposite from the red map. So for example, uh, so, so census tract for St. Louis County in Minnesota, uh, their low response score is 19%. So basically, we are projecting, uh, in 2020 Census, uh, entire households living in the blue boundary, 19% of people will not participate in, uh, Census. And then, um, the list gives the detailed breakdowns over their demographics, such as income, number of children, senior citizens, races, different languages spoken, and homeownership, and et cetera. So studying this data, you know, helps us to really understand who they are in this specific tract, helps us to come up with a strategy to increase their, uh, participation. So, um, for, um, also, let's say, you know, uh, some community partners, they wanna form a Complete Count Committee, and we provide, uh, training. So it can be done in person or webinar, and the materials we provide by the Chicago RCC, and the partners can assist, uh, us with the providing, uh, training space. And I'm sure, you know, the village have had this training, so if there are any community partners who are interested in partnering with the Census Bureau, you know, who can help, um, you know, walk them through this process. So, uh, for anyone who's interested, uh, or who wanna, wanna partner with the Census Bureau to support the 2020 Census, uh, they need to determine ways you can partner for the 2020 Census, appoint a Census liaison, and help with the recruiting for the census jobs, and establish a Complete Count Committee. And, um, draft, uh, write a letter to our regional director and determine who will be serving on their Complete Count Committee, and then, uh, schedule a Complete Count Committee training. Uh, okay, I wanna end with this quote from, uh, our regional director. I guess she's a big, like, a football fan. I don't know about you. "We understand that a plan is only as good as those who are put in the game to mobilize the plan. Just like a football team where everyone has to know their role, these plans will help us truly function as a team with our team goal to count everyone once and only once in the right place for the entire A-State region." These are some outlets. You can check us out, about other, over 100 surveys we conduct yearly, including American Community Survey. Thank you very much for your partnership. If you have any questions or comments or...
Does anybody on the board have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Now go on to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item or any item, because we have no committee at the hall.
Mayor, if I could just, uh, talk for a second?
Yes, Doug, I forgot.
That's okay.
Would you like to make a little announcement?
Yeah, so I just wanted to, uh, kinda update you and the, and the residents of, uh, some, uh, appointments that were made, uh, yesterday to, uh, one of our DuPage County task forces. So, as we've talked about, uh, six months ago or so, DuPage County joined all of the investigative units throughout the county and formed one major crimes task force, one SWAT team, one crisis negotiations team. In, in so doing, they needed to expand their, uh, crisis negotiation team. They put out a letter of intent for, uh, officers who wanted to be part of this team to join it, uh, that was put out countywide to every department. Many people applied. The, two of our detectives applied, Detective Tasha Pilates and Detective Nate Setchwick, uh, both applied and were both selected to be part of the crisis negotiation team and become certified crisis hostage negotiators, uh, as part of that team. So, we have Glendale Heights Police Department and the, the village, and thank you for allowing us to do this, but the commander of DuPage County SWAT team is Sergeant Dave Bailey of the Glendale Heights Police Department. And two of the crisis negotiators that will be on the team of the 16, uh, will be members of the Glendale Heights Police Department. So I just want the community to know that, you know, we're there to serve them, and we have people in place that in times of crisis and in times of need, we have professionally-trained officers within the village that can respond there very quickly and help resolve anything that's going on.
Thank you. We're very proud of the, our police department and...
So am I.
We've got a lot of good officers. Thank you. Now we're back to public discussion of agenda items. Anybody that would like to address this board, please step forward. Being none, you have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure, Trustee Sullivan?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business in new business. Number one is an ordinance to amend Chapter 3 entitled Liquor Control of Title 4 entitled Business and License Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. And this is to amend the hours of operation on Sunday. This is first reading.
Great.
So now we're back to public discussion of agenda items or any item. You would like to discuss? If there's anybody out there would like to, please step forward.
I don't see anybody.
Being none.
You got one.
I'm sorry, Bill, I'm sorry.
Do you wanna talk, Bill?
Your family, though. Your family.
You're hiding behind the podium.
In that case, a motion to adjourn to executive session...
Oh, really?
...to, for the purpose of discussing the appointment, unemployment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5 ILC S 120 slash 2 C1. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
We are adjourning to executive session. Have a safe, nice weekend.